Alright, here we go. It's time for Timehall Meeting number 120. It's October 22nd, 2024. And today, we are being joined by Guillermo Karim, Anyeka Ashley, Ayo, Tuso Lilo, Onise and Sugar and Spice. Thanks all for being here. As you can see on the slide, a little bit of an outline of the agenda. We start with a couple of mentions. Then we have an update from R&amp;D side on the reputation system. And then a request by Karim, a request on a new workgroup. And this will also lead to a bit broader discussion on how do we go about new workgroups? If there's any time left after that, there's space for open topics. Then, as always, a quick reminder on what the ambassador program even is and what we're doing. Basically, we're a group of like-minded people that are all in tune with the mission and vision of the Singularity Net ecosystem and want to help out and contribute to it. And we do this in self-organizing workgroups. And there's a wide range of topics that are covered by these workgroups. So if you're interested in helping out and contributing, there's definitely a workgroup that suits you. So do up onto our Discord server. It has a "How to Join" section and that will tell you how to join. Then, a couple of mentions. Some of these I will just quickly touch on, others might take a bit more time. First of all, there's a vote live on, what's the...? Snapshot is the website, on the Singularity DAO, Kojito and SoftKey merger. So if you happen to have Singularity DAO tokens, do let your voice be heard. And then, since six hours-ish, the Twin Protocol token is actually live and well. I won't go into full details on Twin Protocol, but that token is live, starting today. And yeah, then Lilo, if you don't mind a quick update on the book club?
Yes, I do not mind. Should I go now or?
Yes. Yeah, too much on the list.
Yeah, so yeah, we had a great first meeting. I think at max, there was probably about thirty people there on their first meeting. We just did kind of an introduction of the book. Gabe and Ben were both there. They did introductions of theirself and they went over kind of a broad overview of each chapter and like what each chapter would contain. And then after that, we had kind of an open questions time where we just had a discussion about all kinds of things, which was great. So yeah, that was just what we did on the first meeting. But our next meeting is going to be next Wednesday at... Oh, what time? That will be calendar time. It is 1:30 UTC. So yes, and then we will be going over predominantly Chapter 1. We might talk a little bit about the prologue, but we did kind of cover that in the first meeting a bit. But yeah, we can talk about that again with the first chapter on the next meeting. So yeah, if you have time, read into it. If you need access to the PDF, I can drop that in the chat as well. Let me grab that. And yeah, bring your questions, bring your thoughts. We'll definitely have time to... For people just to throw things out there and really dig into topics. These meetings are like one and a half hours. So we have more than enough time to talk about whatever comes to your mind in these things. I dropped the PDF in the chat. And if you have any other questions, you can message me on Discord, Aether Blade on Discord or on Mattermost or right now.
Awesome, thanks a lot. Looking at the next week's calendar, also reminds me that there will be this time shift. So a whole bunch of meetings, I see now, are starting to overlap. So let's not go there for now. Thanks a lot. Cool, then. Yeah, Guillermo, you asked me to put an announcement on the Latam X Space, but perhaps you would be best suited to give a line or two on that? Or five, as you wish.
Okay, no, simple thanks. Yeah, first of all, it was a great session last week. You really enjoyed. Still have to go through the whole book, but it was great. Now on the point. Yeah, so this Thursday, we're having the second X Space from the Latam community. And we're going to try this first time to have the ecosystem update. So we will follow what Pete and everyone from the spinoffs have been trying by giving an update on evolution on different spinoffs, projects from the whole ecosystem. We will follow the Roundup, the Roundup block that Ines always translates bi-weekly as a guide. And this will be the first kind of ecosystem update, Latam edition. So join us. I'm going to throw the link now on the chat. Yeah, last two weeks ago, we had our first space. It was all about AI and human collaboration, a topic that Lilo and a bunch of us here enjoyed. Now it's time for news, updates for Twin Protocol. Token Live is going to be part of the news, but there's a lot of things going on on the ecosystem. So we were here to update the region in Spanish about all of these events happening. So yeah, that will be this Thursday, 22 UTC, on our X Space account. SNET, Ator, Latam. So I'll see you guys there.
Thanks a lot. Good stuff. And thanks a lot for all this work being done on the translation side of things. That's good stuff. Alright, then next on the list is a little update from Governance Workgroup earlier today. There was a bit of discussion on a suggestion to perhaps allow delegating in the consent process. I put votes there, so I imagine some people will be angry at how I put this at slides, but it's on the consent process, not so much the votes, the decisions being made. Yeah, basically, the idea there is that it won't solve all our problems, far from it. Yeah, for the coming weeks and months, there's a lot of topics we'll need to discuss on how to shift, how to improve, basically, the decision-making process. But relatively straightforward one would be to allow people to delegate their decision-making power to another or contributing. And I put a little note on it on the Governance channel on Discord. And Vanessa rightfully replied like, eh, it's a bit action-packed to discuss this next week, Tuesday. So perhaps we could discuss this Thursday, coming Thursday, as in less than forty-eight hours from now, that will require input. So if you have any thoughts on it, literally anything, it's very much welcome. And we'll see if by coming Thursday, we'll have enough input to turn this into an actual proposal where we can consent on. And yeah, that covers that part. Then we get to the R&amp;D Guild. I believe it's gonna be Kessi? Talking about the reputation system based on Solbahn tokens. Do correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Kessi?
Okay, it's actually meant to be Kenichi.
This is Kenichi in the room. I don't think so. Alright, that makes it a little bit harder if he's not here. Yeah, alternatively, we can just hop forward one topic and see after that. Kenichi's in the house. I think that makes the most sense for now. Is that okay?
That sounds like a plan?
Yeah.
Alright. This is a little bit of an interesting agenda item because it's a little bit of a combination. Got a request by Karim. Thanks a lot for a potential new workgroup on design. And yeah, right now, we do have quite a lot of work being done on design, but it's spread around, it's over multiple workgroups. And yeah, Karim, maybe you can further introduce the concept? If you need any screen sharing, you can.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we do.
Alright. So yeah, I was, I've been contributing actively to the ambassador program for like eight to ten months now. And what I mostly contribute to is design. So like this problem, I'm going to highlight, is just based on my experience so far, right? So I tried to see if there were, when I wanted to start, I tried to see if there were like brand guidelines that were available to the ambassador program. Because like, when I checked online platforms, they just looked like there were a lot of random images being posted without actually any visual consistency or like brand identity, right? So apparently there was one, but like it wasn't detailed enough and I don't know if people were aware of it. So I went for that to like, expand it more on this documented detailed one. And this is what we're using so far in the Marketing Guild for like two months now. If you check most of the posts that have been going out, there's already like a form of consistency there. But like even with this, there are still designs that are not like following this, maybe wrong placement of logos, wrong use of colors, wrong use of fonts. So yeah, and it's just very important that for a project or anything in particular that is trying to reach a particular target audience, it is just very essential that visual identity is present, right? So yeah, that's just like a short summary of what I wanted to say. So the solution is to be, is to like form a design workgroup, right? So the major priority of this workgroup would be to unify all designs related to the ambassador program, right? And apart from that, there are also things that... So AI or AGI in itself as a topic could get really complex, especially for people that are just trying to get into the space, right? So this is where visual engaging content comes in. So I'm talking stuff like infographics, motion graphics, illustrations, animations to if necessary, right? So like this type of content will help reach like a wider audience. Because like, there's a lot of people now that wants to... Because not everybody wants to read an article or watch a video. Most people just want to see something and like get the grasp of it. So yeah, that's basically it from my side. And I also wanted to know if like there's a process or if I could actually give an idea of how new workgroups should be formed, like just like phases to it before a workgroup is actually established. Maybe I'm rambling too much, let me give people something to say.
No, you're not rambling at all. And in my mind, it makes it all the more clear that a dedicated design workgroup would be a very good thing. So there's a couple of things. And that's also why I put it on, you know, on the slide, like a broader discussion on new workgroups. Because it does tie into that. There was quite some feedback during the retrospectives on the budget proposal that right now, it's, we lack a clear process for starting a new workgroup. Workgroups that have been started, people just started them. And yeah, right now, we do find ourselves at the twenty-plus workgroups and budget that is somewhat limiting there. We need budget fitting every quarter to make things work. So that's why people, yeah, kind of started indicating like, well, we either need no more new workgroups or if we do, we need a clear process for that. Yeah, and then just one thing to add, like the way I see it, that we already do quite a bit of work on this. But the allocations for it are across multiple workgroups. There's video, there's marketing. There might be others where there's design involved as well. Yeah, so I figured basically because of this budget situation and clarity of the process for putting a new workgroup, I think, I figured it would be good to tie it into a broader discussion, like how do we even go about this? Like, we do have a new budgets, new ideas budget, which in itself, this being a new idea fits. At the same time, right now, to me, it's not quite clear if if the current allocations on existing workgroups would already be enough budget-wise to cover the needs for a design workgroup? So that in theory, those workgroups would then get lowered by X amount? And putting those together would be the amount for the new workgroup? Would that be a thing or? Yeah, yeah, go for it, Karim.
Yeah, so I guess that could actually be a thing as well. So the point of trying to unify, right, designs, right, from other workgroups and guilds. So like, when everybody's, when all designers or anybody that has been creating like visuals for any workgroup or guild, we're just trying to like assemble in one place and make sure everything is unified. So like, yeah, I guess all, every other workgroup or guild trying, that has like an allocation for design, I guess it could be excluded, right? Then to be added to the allocation for the design work. Also, I also feel like this should be something that should be tested at first, like maybe a month or two. So yeah, we could work with the new ideas initiatives to see if it is actually a good fit, if it's actually beneficial to the ambassador program. I don't know if that makes sense.
Yeah, to me it does. Yeah, it's a bit complicated by this whole situation where some people feel we should not have any new workgroups until we have a clear process for for setting one up. At the same time, yeah, that getting that process up and running might take a bit longer than, than... Ideally, we would want to wait for, in this case, unified design. Guillermo?
Yeah. Hey Karim, have you discussed this topic with the Marketing Guild members? Have you presented the idea, probably like a sub-unit within the marketing? You reach the team that is in charge of that?
Yeah, so like I said, what I mostly contribute to is design, the design aspect. And that's what I'm on da in marketing, graphic designs, right? So I just thought that, because we've had, we've had issues where some workgroups don't want us to like touch their designs and they don't want... Meanwhile, that design is not actually following the already created brand guidelines, right? So I just thought that having a group dedicated to ensuring that everything is consistent would just make sense. So yeah, I brought it about some individuals as well, but I just thought that yeah, it'd be better to be on an open space like the Town Hall. So everybody gets to hear about this.
Cool. Yeah, my personal take, if you want me to give you a thought or share an idea, is that because the example the R&amp;D has, we did advertise our actions, you know, through the last quarter. And if you were in marketing, you know that. So we share our infographic layouts, or however you want to call it. And we were overlapping, we were doing two layouts. We did ours, we shared it, and then to post it on X, the Marketing Guild did a replicate following the branding guidelines. Similar, almost the same, but little tweaks and changes. And in governance, we have been doing, I have been helping doing layouts and graphics. So I believe it's more about internal communication and not to repeat the efforts. So probably a unit that is within the marketing, that is within the communication umbrella, it will be a good way to organize things. And to have open branding layouts. I asked today to one of the guys that is helping on the marketing to have the Figma layout open. So that way, we don't depend on one unit. We have the open Figma files with the branding, instructions, fonts, size, everything, and each way, each way, workgroups and guilds will be able to create their own communication pieces following the design that you don't need to redesign every time things. You, and so Ciro sent me today the Figma file open. So that way, I can create, yeah, pieces following and having a unity in what is branding. I probably, if you ask me, I believe that's a stronger, a more concise and organized way to go.
Alright, maybe some thoughts in the room from somebody who hasn't shared the thoughts yet? Won't put anybody on the spot, don't worry, but it's always good to have more opinions. Ayo, oh, three hands. I think Ayo was first, then Sugar and then Kenichi.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Hello, hello, everybody. For me, this is quite simple. Without the process, it's difficult to know if we are doing it right or not, or if you're doing it well or not. So and then, so without process, it's just really difficult to know what merit is. Now, I mean, I understand that we, I mean, we do designs. But then, maybe if Karim presents a proposal, maybe everybody can read the proposal and understand, especially considering that there would be things that, items that need to be proposed or factors that needs to be taken into consideration. For example, how does this work, right? So the design that you are talking about, whose design? What workgroup's design? What is the process? Or are you saying that every workgroup would have to come to the a particular set of stuff to, 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 maybe we need something done, we need something done. Even with the present video workgroup, sometimes workgroups still, different workgroups still has to do their own videos. Because I mean, maybe people from video volume may not even understand what it is that this workgroup is trying to do in a video. So and then, and I think this actually also impacts, maybe for example, the the Marketing Guild. Because I mean, like Guillermo said, this is definitely going to be a subunit on that Marketing Guild. I mean, the whole, the whole thing. So I think that what we really need to do is to put premium attention on getting the process out. If we get the process out, then it's easy for anyone who wants to create a staff, a workgroup or a guild of things like that. So that's what it is for me.
Alright. Yeah, thanks for sharing. Now we move up to four, two hands. It's changing as we speak. Sugar, all yours.
Hi, everyone. So about the design workgroup, this is something that we have been talking about since, if I can remember, maybe two years ago. And I understand what the Karim is coming from, you know. Most times you see designs that are not following the brand guidelines. And right now, different workgroups are doing their own design, you know. I feel like it's needed that we have uniformity in this. So but what I would like to suggest is that this design team or design workgroup or whatever it's going to be called, should be under marketing. Because marketing is like the umbrella for things like this. Who are we doing a design, who are we doing a graphic? It's for information, it's for maybe a marketing purpose. So just like Slit had said in the chat, rather than having every workgroup come to meet you, or we need to make this design for us, why not there be a process where you can check to see if they are following the guidelines? Or if you need to do an infographic or something like that, you need to use this color scheme, you need to use this, you need to use this font and all that. But there's also the issue where whoever is doing the design in any workgroup may not be skilled enough, might not just know exactly what he or she is doing. He's not someone who is design-inclined, so we also have that problem. But I think that the proposal here, Karim, will be nice. Every workgroup that wanted to begin, like I know, archives and writers, even gamers, they had, they all had a proposal set up. So maybe it should be nice to have a proposal from you, let everybody see and read and understand. It's a good idea, I like it.
Alright, thank you very much. Yeah, let's get Kenichi first and then Karim. You can maybe try responding to all of the three comments at once?
Yeah, hello, everyone. So thinking about the idea, it's a really good one. Personally, I think in undermarketing, we've been discussing having a unified content calendar that would be for everyone in the program. So just as we have our meetings on a calendar, we should have the content that each workgroup wants to publish on a calendar, right? So the idea would be that not necessarily that everyone, at least for the content, not everyone actually has to come to marketing and say, ah, I posted something. So there would be like a unified form or something. So the idea of this form is if you have any content, just all the materials you have on the content, submit it in there and have a due date for it. And on that day, marketing will ensure that that content goes out. But for every content that you put up or idea that you put up, unless it's essentially important that it goes out, if it's like, I'll give it like a three days gap or two days gap before you, like ahead of time for the due date or the publishing date. But for any, of course, anything that is really urgent, it can always tag us in the marketing channel. So we've been discussing this and it's kind of like our focus for this quarter. And the overhead is quite something. And we don't actually have the bandwidth to cover for graphics right now. Because the idea is that we have core designers, people that understand the brand guidelines and have been using it and all. Now, I do understand that if there is a group that is to come out of solely on design, it will consist of the people that already design in other workgroups, right? It would just be a case of unifying and improving the quality of the content that goes out and giving them a bit of a guide. So now each workgroup doesn't or shouldn't actually have to come to marketing or the design group and say, eh, I want to create this content. The designer that is already working with them or used to that workgroup should know of whatever design is needed and should be able to report into the group.
and should be able to report into the group that, oh, this is a, a design that I'm working on and this is what I have. I feel like it will actually unify our content. Because so many times we publish on Twitter and we have multiple graphics, multiple colors, multiple things, uh, happening at the same time. And, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's not that, it's a bit of conformity there, it's not really aligned, especially with the fact that we do have actual brand guidelines. So, uh, personally, I feel like the design group would be a great idea. Uh, making it work might be, uh, extensive, but on the long run, it will eliminate the need for each workgroup to actually think about the overhead required for design. And also it to like actually make our, uh, marketing and our, um, awareness initiatives bloom or bloom better basically, because I mean, everybody's going to be using the exact same brand guidelines, so that's my two cents on it actually.
Hmm, yeah, thanks. Um, just one clarification, uh, from, from my understanding, uh, when you say there's, uh, right now there's no bandwidth, um, for design, how does that relate to, um, on the, the budget within marketing, um, for design?
Yeah, so, um, the budget on the marketing for design is, I saw, I just saw a question on India, yeah, is nine hundred, but it's not, um, of obviously it's been, it has gone through fitting. But now it's the idea of this current, um, allocation that we have is to ensure that every content that we create that we think everybody might want to know about or might want to like hear about, basically, we are the ones in charge of like designing that. And then there's, uh, the task force too that ensures to go around and check which other workgroups are not actually, uh, following the brand guidelines. And it's, uh, and the reason why I said we don't have the bandwidth is that most of the time, these contents have already gone out, right? So now we have to tell, uh, whoever posted it to pull it down or tell them to like, uh, take the, um, edited version and all. And then over time, it's not feasible because now we are not just only spotting workgroups that need design, basically. We are spotting designs that have already gone out and don't match the brand guidelines. So we don't have that kind of bandwidth and then we have, most of the time we have to reach out to designers at odd hours that, eh, can you work on this design in front too, to ensure that the content goes out? Uh, most likely if you can edit it if it's on Twitter before it passes the hour mark. Or if it's past the hour mark, we have to delete it and then reschedule.
All right, um, three hands up. Uh, looking at the time, I do want to, uh, reserve at least the last ten minutes of this call for, um, the agenda item we skipped on earlier. So, uh, I will be cutting this short unfortunately within seven minutes. And with that, uh, Karim, the floor is yours.
Yeah, um, okay, thank you very much. I'll try to, um, answer as much as I can. So, um, having, um, I think it was Guillermo that I'm trying to answer first. So having brand guidelines are very blue for everybody, doesn't necessarily address the issue of like, them just say skill sets, right? Not everybody can actually design, right? Okay, so moving forward now, um, the idea, the idea I had, I already have the documents as well, probably, I'll probably share that too. So the idea I had was that, um, yeah, there have been designers, um, creating designs for individual workgroups of dudes. So the idea is just to gather everybody that has been doing this in one place. So it's just, it should just be like, the designers are already assigned to particular workgroups, right? So you just know what's going to happen in this workgroup. Then you also have to make a design, but then the design now is going to like, the design is now going to like follow the brand guidelines because, um, everybody is in the design workgroup and there will be templates already that will be prepared, that everybody can follow. Yeah, um, so yeah, that's, I just wanted to address that, the issue of how would, um, designers be assigned to workgroups of dudes? So it's just very easy. Um, it's, if, if there are no designers in any workgroup, anybody can, um, be assigned to this workgroup. Any designer that has already been making designs already could just assign themselves to this workgroup. I just track all designs that will be needed from that particular workgroup, right? Uh, yeah, just because of time, I think I should just stop there.
All right, thanks. Um, more and more hands. How we're gonna do this? Uh, Ayo, yours. Let's, let's try and keep it concise, please.
All right, thank you. Uh, so, um, having, um, consistency in design, having a brand guidelines that is used and adopted, and having a process around how, how design is made and distributed in the program is good. Uh, my, um, first of all, this is a bit, um, uh, I think that the fact that this was not discussed at all in the marketing guild, considering that, I mean, um, Karim is one of the main people within creatives with marketing guild, also comes, uh, maybe as a bit of surprise, which, um, I think that all, every, all of this can simply be solved by a proposal like, um, uh, Sukri said. So I think the first thing is let's have a proposal that people can comment, respond to and all of that, and then we can pick it from there.
That sounds pretty sensible to be honest. Um, on Yaga?
All right, um, so as I also said, this wasn't properly discussed in the marketing group. And, uh, this is still like new to me basically, because we were trying to unify the content's calendar. And, um, and trying to get the process whereby, um, random posting won't be done, we'll be able to go through, um, the contents that go out on our social media pages. So the process is actually, um, still a work in progress. We actually had a call with the video workgroup, we were trying to unify all three workgroups together, trying to, um, push out a single content related to the respective guilds and workgroups. So that, um, they are aware that, um, if you have a post, you could submit it in the calendar, the, the team could go through it for any changes or any correction that needs to be made to ensure that it meets the brand guidelines and everything is all synced before it's actually posted. So, um, having this process that we develop, which was going to solve some of these issues of, um, posting, um, having random contents in our social media pages. And, um, I, I'm, I'm just like, it's, the initiative is, is not, is not bad actually, but it's quite new. Because the process we, we, we developed was going to solve something like that. So I don't know, but still, still, let Karim, um, present the proposal, then we could have comments on it.
All right, um, yeah, I, I figured even though there's, uh, currently in the proposal, it would still be good to, um, touch on it, ju- mostly based on the, um, feedback during the retrospectives, like, uh, on just lack of a proper process for introducing new workgroups. Um, and having a bit of broader discussion on that as well. And yeah, surprise, surprise, we don't have infinite time, uh, during this, this town hall. Um, so we didn't really get to that portion of the discussion yet. Um, yeah, and as Sugar and Spice, uh, mentions in chat, I don't think it's intended for Kickstarter in the current quarter, um. In itself, uh, I, I would say that can still be done, it's a relatively, um, seeing we, we almost have the first month in already. Um, the budget would be a bit lower as well, um, but yeah, okay, so. Bit of a recap there, I feel getting a proposal helps a lot on the specific discussion for the design workgroup. There's clear benefits, there's potential and clarities that would be resolved by proposal. And, yeah, on the process for, um, setting up new workgroups and, and whether we even want that, um. Yeah, there's just no, no time to, to properly discuss that right here, right now. Uh, I thought it would be a, a good topic to pull from governance to town hall, but then maybe that was not the best of decisions from my side. Uh, so that will keep being on the list for a lot of things we need, still need to discuss in governance context. Um, with that, I see the clock ticking exactly ten minutes, uh, remaining on the slot. So I'd like to hop back in the slides one topic. Um, and gives the floor to, um, Konichi to update us on the reputation system. If you want to screenshot, let me know, you can.
Uh, yeah, I just sent your request. Okay, all right, um, for, um, for anyone was, I can say this for the first time, I'm just going to go through the readme a little bit, uh, to give everyone a context of, um, what we are trying to achieve here. Um, this report actually contains all the information you need here basically, and it's, I think it's public. So everyone can actually take a look and, uh, if there's anywhere we can improve, please do let us know. So, uh, let's start with, um, yeah, let me start from the overview. So the, uh, I, I'm just keeping the name, yeah, actually, but, uh, the name is called Legacy. Uh, it's a soulbound token program or system basically for the ambassador program. And the idea here is to track active participation and, uh, to track them and secure them and save them using SBTs, badges and, uh, reputation scores. Uh, this hasn't been updated yet, consider dates are still out, but, um, yeah, let me actually go deeper into it. All right. So, um, here, actually, let me show you where I can. Yeah, so we are looking at the documentation and the user guide basically. And this contains all the information you need to understand about how this program or system is going to work. Uh, initially, the key concept here is to have, uh, a group, basically. Uh, this could be workgroup leads or could be selected, uh, outside the workgroup, uh, leads or guild leads, basically. And these people have the authority to actually issue badges. Uh, we'll get into what the badge is. Each of the, of this circle holders will be represented by an ERC seven two one NFT, non-transferable. And, uh, their basic role here is to create and manage coupon specs and also issue badges. Uh, to go into what a coupon is, uh, coupon, think of a coupon as, um, an identity card basically, or like a card literally, that has each metadata of every task or like, for each coupon spec actually, it has the details of the entirety of the task, who completed it, the relevant dates, uh, the record, proof of submission or contribution. And each coupon spec, it can be generated from our D work task. So once you create a D work task basically and include all the information, that is the coupon spec. But in this case, it's going to be, uh, blockchain data, so it's going to be metadata. Uh, the coupons spec is also created by the, um, workgroup lead, you know, the sentience basically, and they issue a badge against the coupons. Now, these coupons come in different types naturally. There's the universal one, this is what we share across all workgroups, like meeting, participation, uh, documentation, and the basics, basically, facilitation. And then they are unique, specific to a workgroup and also unidentified, which basically doesn't fall in the two categories above. And, um, there's a short example here to show you how this could work, but I don't think we have enough time for that. Uh, but yeah, the badges now, uh, are actual mints basically, and each badge actually comes with a score. Now, for each of these badges, it's linked to a specific coupon spec, it can't be, this can't be gamed. So if you complete a task, you, um, uh, short stuff here, let me just show a quick Figma of it. Um, okay, so, uh, let me zoom in for, yeah. So let's say you complete the task, I'm going to start from, let me just start from the top so everyone understands. There's a website and the idea is you go to the website, if you're a newcomer, you'll be sent to the onboarding page and then you get onboarded and then you can also use your, uh, let us know what your skills are. For people that are already part of the, a workgroup, they will be able to see the workgroup that they are officially a part of and this will be checked using Discord tags. Uh, now for each task that you complete on D work and is actual, or maybe GitHub and is actually completed and signed off by the, uh, entire workgroup, there would be a badge for it. And to claim each of these badges, you will need a coupon spec, basically. The coupon spec is the proof that you actually did it. And once you are done claiming the badge, and all these badges will eventually lead to a mint and to be able to highlight which badge you actually minted it for. Uh, uh, this is just a rough analogy of how it's going to work. They are going to be spared, or maybe like where, basically, and special badges, but we'll talk about that later. So, um, yeah, these badges will be stored in an NFT registry, can't be touched, can't be gamed, can't be deleted. Except there will be the ability to expire each of the badge. Basically, let's say somebody is, is not using or is not under that rule anymore. They will be able to see all their data, but they, they will not be able to use that data actively to vote. Uh, unless they are still part of the workgroup. So, uh, there will be an initial passport, this is like a proof of membership that you are part of the ambassador program and you are interested in participating in the reputation system. And it's also a proof of humanity, so we don't have people having two accounts or basically just, uh, gaming different tasks. So there will be a passport and this passport will be minted, be the first mint you get and it will allow you to be able to mint other badges. And, um, there is a full overview of how everyone can contribute and how the reputation system will work. The reputation and governance itself is not being worked on yet, it's going to be a more, um, later on in the milestones. But basically, this is the step by step. You log in, you navigate the ones you already have or the new ones you might want to claim. Once you complete a task automatically, as long as the task has been completed and it's in the done column on D work, there will be a coupon spec for it automatically, it's left to the workgroup lead or the sentience to actually create the badge that you will mint and tag that badge to a specific coupon spec. And you can always track your coupons, there is a section there, uh, actually inside this documentation, on the design, you will find this Figma. And, uh, it has a, a whole flow basically below, but we don't have that much time for that. Uh, basically, once you redeem your coupons, so think of it like you're, you literally have coupons for a store. You redeem your coupons and these coupons, since they are tagged to a specific badge, automatically that badge pops up and asks you to redeem and mint it. Once you mint this, you can always check all your badges in this section and you can use this to like, for decision making in each workgroup solely or for the entire ambassador program, since each of these tasks will be given a particular score. And that particular score will be the, uh, reputation system for governors, yeah, eventually. And also the idea is that, uh, for people that have been participating in different workgroups, there will be a dynamic, uh, change basically. So for example, the, let's say writers' workgroup highly rates or ranks lots of tasks, but compared to other workgroups that might not rank that up that much, obviously there will be a bit of a calculation and a score to ensure that everyone is given fair, uh, rights basically. Uh, there is an administrative guide here that gives us more context about it. And also there will be the, um, audits and maintainers basically for this. Uh, there is currently, uh, still in progress, but there's a website here for the ambassador program to, and it, this will have information on all the guilds and the workgroup, still a work in progress. And then there is, uh, yeah, the first thing you have to do is mint the passports. And here we'll be able to track all the tasks that we have and contributor that we have over time in real time. And, uh, so basically after visiting the website, you go to Legacy and, uh, sorry, let me refresh this. Sorry, this is locally hosted. Um, no, it's nothing, let's see, it's Legacy. Might have to check the back end. All right, uh, but basically Legacy is just like, uh, an app, basically, an app on the website. And this will, for anyone just hearing about the ambassador program, the website will be a place to go to. And if you are interested in participating or contributing, all you have to do is mint your badge and join our Discord, uh, basically, for more information. Yeah, uh, here actually goes over the technicality of each of the systems, yeah, and their full architecture. For anyone who's interested, please do, uh, go over it. Uh, we will be using, I know I mentioned, uh, ERC tokens, but there is, uh, currently a new, um, Cardano proposal, CIP proposal that passed recently, creating SBTs and non-transferable NFTs and stuff on the Cardano blockchain. So this will be for both Ethereum and Cardano, we are currently working on the research. And, uh, yeah, so you can expect for anyone, regardless of which, uh, blockchain network you're using, you will be able to participate in this, uh, program. So, uh, I think that's all the time we have, uh, thank you very much. And, uh, obviously you'll be expecting more updates as we progress. Thank you.
And thank you. Lots of progress since, uh, the last time I heard about this, which admittedly is some months, but, um, yeah, great to see the progress. Now, are there any questions in the room? Or comments? Or comments? Silence. I do for myself, uh, I I would, uh, I appreciate you mentioning, um, it's not uh just gonna be on Ethereum side, um, also on Cardano side. Uh, yeah, clearly fees are a thing and they're a bit more user friendly on the Cardano side, um. Uh, but I would like to urge that, um, we would be relatively, um. Hesitant to put too much governance power based on people needing to pay for, pay fees, like whether it's small fees or or not, but um, whether we. Uh, when we uh attribute this this governance power, um. Yeah, I don't know, I just would not want there to be any financial barrier um for achieving that, just a a little uh, little comment. Um. Everybody room in the room is silent and not raising hands, so I assume, I can only assume no questions. Um, um. Uh, just to be one hundred percent sure, uh, would you mind uh sharing the link, maybe in the R and D uh channel? So if people want to check out the git, which I do personally, and they they can easily find it there?
Um, sure, I'll send it in the channel and also share it here on Zoom.
Alright, um, I do believe, uh, well, agenda wise, that's it for now at least, uh, want to put a quick check on the room if there's any. Further questions or comments or things we should add to this session right now. There is, Guillermo.
Yeah, sorry, no, I just wanna add, um, probably something that is complimentary for what Kanichi's just showed. Um, and something we discussed with Pete, how we, how we create a knowledge graph of of all our contributions. Uh, so these are the, this is the framework, the R and D, you know, this putting together, um, we talked today, probably a a short update also on the. The skilled database, so we have feedback from the onboarding team. Uh, we're gonna make some tweaks and upgrades, I think it's already backend and frontend, they're already set up. Deployment is about to happen, we have already, um, yeah, so all the teams, Rojo. Um, AJ, Advance and Kanichi are working all together in for integration, so. Funny fact is gonna have all of them working together in one space and probably the uh. Landing page for the ambassadors that Kanichi showed at the end, it will be a place for all in one for this program, so yeah, happy. To share that updates and we keep everybody uh on the look while we keep moving forward. Thanks, Pete.
Hmm, thanks for that. Quick check, further check, final check on the room. I think it's a wrap for now. Thanks all for being here, sharing your time with us and. Yeah, there's a lot of upcoming calls, uh, I'm not gonna call them out, there's a lot, just open the calendar and you won't have to be bored one single moment of the week. And if there's not a call ongoing, uh, you can always check out Discord, of course. Um. That's it, thanks again and see you on the next one.